Okay, so this is the Policy Committee meeting for April 26, 2021. And this is at an unusual time for this committee, so thank you, everybody, for accommodating a sort of late change. So I think we're going to just leap into the agenda. So we have, again, a pretty full agenda. We have several policies that we are hoping to vote out a committee for first reading. And the first one is the Responsible Use Policy, and I think we have a staff presentation?
Yes. Sorry, one second.
Julia is here, by the way.
What was that?
Julia is in the House.
Okay, thanks.
So this is our Responsible Use Policy, and this is really a replacement of an existing policy. We covered this during our last meeting, and I was asked for examples of privacy clauses that were included in it. So kind of moving towards that point. And one of the, one of the issues that came up was the, what we, what we have in here is no expectation of privacy. And that is a part of our existing Acceptable Use Policy, which is what this replaces. But was asked to find some other examples of that in where that exists in other districts and around the country. So the first one we found was Beaverton School District. And doesn't say quite succinctly, no expectation of privacy, but files and other information, including email sent or received, generated or stored on district servers are not private and may be subject to monitoring. So one of the things like, like this is that the, the language is a bit software, but it does convey a similar meaning. We would just need to can change the language at the end of this, where it says district-owned email system, to just district systems rather than just email. Another example is in Washington schools. So Washington schools use a similar policy book through all schools. And this one's probably a bit more abrasive than something that we'd want to put in there. The last line, or the second to last line, "The district reserves the right to disclose any electronic messages to law enforcement officials or third parties." Probably, probably a bit brusque for what we're trying to do. But it does have a lot of great detail on where that, where that no expectation of privacy exists.
What a different way to do that, because, sorry, thank you for the presentation. I'm just, the different examples, one question, would it be lots of public entities at the bottom of their email have like a, you know, this is a public record, so instead of saying like, we're going to provide it to, to law enforcement, which seems to kind of reinforce this, it may reinforce the thinking of a school-to-prison pipeline of more like, these, you know, it's public, it's, you're using a public resource. I'm just wondering if that's like a different way to disclose that something's public?
And that, that's certainly good, but the, this is not limited to email. And I'm not recommending that we use the Washington language by any means. I think that that's, that's probably a bit stronger than what we'd want. But it, the no expectation of privacy also includes, you know, that, bringing it back to that real-world analog. If we saw smoke coming from a locker, we would open that locker. You know, if Google calls us up and says, somebody is sharing a copyrighted movie file out of their Google Drive, we have to act, and that's the reason why. But when we go in and we would act, we would also take a look at, well, they told us about this one file. Are they sharing dozens or hundreds? So that, that's a part of why that language is there.
And our language is soft, it doesn't, doesn't have a reference to law enforcement. If you look at, it's under four, a paragraph for fostering safety and security of users. We give an explanation as to the, as to the why, which I think is helpful. And then what the, the actual language is, "The district may monitor, intercept, and review, without further notice, activities occurring on the district's technology resources. Users should have no expectation of privacy while using district technology resources." So it's a little softer than what Washington put forward. While still being very clear to the user what to expect.
I have a quick question about the disclosure to law enforcement. By not stating it in there, does that mean we are not allowed to disclose it to law enforcement? Or is it just that we're not including it in the policy?
Just not including that reference in the policy. If, when law enforcement comes to us with subpoenas, we are legally required to provide it additionally when there's, when there are accompanying DHS for a child welfare investigation, we are required by statute to provide them information.
So just other examples that we, we found in, just a precursory glance. Eugene had something similar, they refer to a network. Network is really not appropriate in the cloud age. You know, we would have to say something like, systems, or have a definition of network that includes our intangible, intangible assets, like Google Cloud accounts and that sort of thing. And San Francisco Unified has a very detailed, but still kind of gets down to that same one. And, yeah, we also find this when we look at other districts like Boise, Clark County, Denver, Cincinnati, public sector entities like City of Portland, Bolloma County, and companies like Nike in Columbia. So why do we do this? First and foremost, it's a warning. You know, the last thing we want to do is uncover information that somebody may wish to be private. So if there's something that you would rather people don't ever know, don't store it on these systems. Second, it's a bit of a disclaimer, kind of like I mentioned, you know, if Google calls us up and says, somebody is sharing something out of their account, we have to act. And something, something about that also is that if we don't, there's some pretty draconian consequences from somebody like Google. They can actually shut off that student's account, and then we have to find other ways for that student to get access to those technology resources. And then the third, you know, it's intended to shape behavior. There's, knowing that there's no expectation of privacy may prevent somebody from doing something and protect us from the actions or the implications of that activity. But the other thing it can help us do is identify systems where we may need to keep information confidential and private. If there's something like an anonymous, anonymous reporting requirement, let's get a system put together that can establish anonymous reporting, because email by its very nature is not anonymous. You do have a lot of metadata information that comes in with a received email that could identify potentially inadvertently somebody making that report. However, we can get systems that would produce something like that.
We actually have a system that does it now. We have, we refer people to the Safe Oregon site, which allows you to report anonymously. So that's currently, I think it's on our students' support webpage. It's also on the Title IX webpage. And I think we're talking about including it in the, if I recall correctly, in the complaint policy.
Perfect. And that's also something that you would use for confidential conversations with students through medical professionals, mental health professionals, to be specific.
So I have just a quick technical question. Do we, I'm looking in the packet of materials for the, the meeting. Do we, I'm not seeing the proposed policy. Do I just need to go look at it somewhere else? I'm, I'm looking through the, like, where's the PPS, the proposed language?
So I think there was, I think there was an error in the posting. And if you were, if you're on the board book, if you refresh it, the, the computer use policy is now posted.
Okay, it wasn't.
Yeah, there are no changes from the last time, but it wasn't up there until this morning. Actually, it's called the Responsible Technology Use Policy in the draft. So any other questions?
No, I find this very helpful as we consider this language. And I do agree, Director Pram Edwards, that, I mean, I think we, we want to be clear with people. But I, I think, you know, stating law enforcement might receive this. I think that's the extreme case. We want to be clear with people that they don't have an expectation to privacy. But I think we don't want to bring law enforcement into it unless we need to, because that is not our first avenue.
So what say you? We have some alternative language, some examples from other districts. Do we want to amend the language that's currently there? I think, I think where we've, where we are is that the, the gist of the existing language needs to stay there in some format in order to protect both users and the district. We don't want anybody to be under the misapprehension that there is, that their, their use of district systems carries any, any privacy. So we want to be clear, but we want to be a little politic, I guess.
How exactly, and this is slightly off-topic, but how do we inform students and reinforce that notion around privacy?
So it is in the student handbook. And I know that one of the things that the DSC was talking about doing was creating like a student bill of rights, or just sort of a one-pager for students to kind of articulate what students can expect. Jackson, is that something the DSC is still working on?
And we've talked about it. We've just been kind of working on COVID and reopening for a little bit now. But that's something we are considering, yeah.
So one, one way that a lot of large, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Aaliyah, I didn't know you.
Say, one of the ideas that Nikki had floated last year when we had talked about some of this stuff with the search and seizure policy was stickers or, you know, things on lockers or signs at school, signage at schools also to help students be aware of that. That, that was one thing she was contemplating, but I don't think anything ever happened with that. Director Pram Edwards, sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't, didn't know you hadn't finished. So one thing is, you can, when somebody turns their computer on, on the sign-in screen, that's a pretty common place for that disclaimer to appear, is one, one way. So like essentially, you get it every time you, you go online, just a reminder. One thing I think we should be careful not to compare our policy to the private sector, because if you're an employee of a business, like, you're an employee, and I think our student relationship, relation to the district is different. And so I've just, I think it's better for us to use sort of public sector examples. And I don't, I think there's a, I appreciate the sort of sampling of different languages that can be used. I think we need to, like, lead with some sort of value statement. And like, why we'd be doing it, because to me, otherwise, it reads a little, it, it comes across a little bit as Big Brother. Versus, like, there are legitimate reasons for, as have been cited already in this meeting, for why the district would, would do that. But I, but I'm not seeing that in the draft policy. And I think that might be a disclaimer. I mean, I know, like, when the whole, all the file-sharing apps came out at first, you know, I, I know personally some teenagers who were students at PPS at the time, who were really surprised when their, like, their access got shut down, because like, hey, everybody's downloading that free music or whatever. And it's like, oh, yeah, but it's copyrighted. And, you know, there is the ability to shut down that if you're violating copyrights, which is, you know, I think, not something that we should be turning over to law enforcement, but like, sharing with our student population, especially high school students, about the value of intellectual property and why the district should be, we should be protective of intellectual property and, and, well, I follow the law also. But to me, that's maybe a couple-sentence lead-in of just like, why we would do that versus like, we're interested in what you're sending to your friend, or what you're emailing your teacher about, which.
Yeah, I think just for me, Julia, the scope at the beginning of the policy where it says, sort of lays that out of what are the values that, you know, we see technology as a tool to enhance student education, but that we're also interested in digital citizenship, which is what I think you're talking about, right? Like respecting intellectual property is part of digital citizenship, so is, you know, the cyberbullying. And so maybe we talk about, we can be a little more explicit in the scope portion to outline some of those values. But I feel like this part is really cut and is, is trying to say with some value, you know, not saying, we're going to go through your stuff. But when there's an issue, we, we are going to do that to like, ensue, ensure, there we go, ensure is the word I want, ensure safety and security.
We didn't add, and we talked about this, and Travis, you can probably speak more to the, the specifics of the laws. But there are two laws that are really driving a lot of the, the, the monitoring requirement. That's our federal laws and state laws, SIPA and COPA. And, and I don't know if that would be helpful to understand the why, that's, because that's part of the, the why. When we, we talked more generally about the security and safety, and those statutes require us to do certain monitoring for, for student safety. So Travis, can you, can you help me out here?
Sure. SIPA is the Children's Internet Protection Act. And under it, we are obligated to protect students from two things, pornography and what is very loosely defined as harmful content. And when I say loosely defined, it, it, it's not. It is one of those things that is kind of up to the community to interpret. So there's some obvious wins there, right? You know, hate speech and drugs and gambling and things along those lines that really just don't have a whole lot of academic merit. So we kind of bound, bound those together, and that's what we, we protect via SIPA. But SIPA is also, it's one of the few laws that have teeth in this regards, where we actually have a financial incentive to do this based on our E-rate reimbursements. So we are actually asked, are we complying with SIPA at the time that we go and ask for these reimbursements? And this reimbursement comes to several million dollars a year. And then COPA is the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act. It does reflect largely the vendor's obligations to protect our student data. But part of that is needing to be able to see what is in that student account, or needing to be able to see, for instance, like Flipgrid is an example where you would have a district, district account established on Flipgrid, but it is owned by Flipgrid, and the, the third-party relationship is between PPS and Flipgrid. Being able to say that a student is sharing a piece of content out there that is inappropriate means that Flipgrid doesn't necessarily act on it, or the workflow for that would be, a student told a student who told a teacher, who then comes to us in IT, and we have to go and pursue that. That would be a, a long conversation with the vendor. We really don't have a direct administrative access to something like Flipgrid, but we would engage with Flipgrid to try and get to the bottom of what is in that, that student's account, and try and get that content removed before it was viewed any wider.
So would it, would it be possible, maybe it would be helpful to have a couple of sentences under, looking at number four, let's see, two, under purpose, no, for fostering safety and security of users. Would it make sense to have just a couple of sentences saying that, you know, PPS is required to comply with, you know, some federal laws, and you can mention what they are? And as kind, to sort of frame the, the, frame the rest of it, you know, and, and that means that you have no privacy. But it, it kind of, it explains the reason for no privacy, and it kind of provides some, some parameters for the circumstances under which the district might have to, you know, go in and look at things or take things down. Would that be possible?
I don't think it should be framed solely because we're only doing this because we have to. I, I think there are good reasons for protecting our students.
Right, right.
Nuance there.
Yeah. Also, I, I mean, just, this is the way the world works. Like, we're, we're also having to educate students about behavioral expectations out in the world when they leave. And out in the world, if you are using someone else's system, you are subject to their constraints. And there, there is no privacy. I mean, if you're using, in the public sector or in the private sector. If you're using your employer's system, you, you better be careful what you put on it, because people are going to know, or they could know.
Of privacy, period, regardless of what you're using.
Yeah.
And I think we have to balance that also with, if you're a parent who works during the day, doesn't have access to a computer, or to like, be able to call a teacher or stop by a classroom at the end of the school day during non-apendemic times, you would send something like, I have a concern about my student, and it may be really personal. And you send that by email, and like, oh, this, like, somebody's monitoring this. I, I think that's why it's, I mean, parents are going to need to be able to use that. And I also think students will use it in a way to, you know, maybe disclose personal things that, you know, there's nothing wrong with them, but they would want to keep them private, because they're, you know, deeply personal.
Right, so, so in the, you know, if you add the sentence about the statutes that are governing it, among the statutes governing it, it makes like FERPA.
Yeah, and put in layman's, layman's, laypeople's terms, what, what that is. And I think there was probably two sentences that I could have pulled out there of like, like the descriptor of what, what those statutes do. And it's like, oh, I'm not writing about, you know, like, I'm not file-sharing or using somebody else's, like, intellectual property or not, you know, spewing hate speech, but I am writing something intensely personal about my child to my child's teacher. And that's obviously not in this other category, so I do think that is helpful.
So one thing I also want to point out is that this is, this covers staff as well as students. So there may be a time where we are asked through a, through a proper process by HR to go in and investigate a staff emails or a staff member's emails. That may not be reflecting any particular law, but in regards to their performance. So I'm, I'm very reluctant to restrict this down to a set of laws that govern this action. Like, it, this is, this is not necessarily for the laws we comply with, but for the things that we can't predict. If, you know, it's, it's that smoke coming from the locker example. I don't know why smoke would be coming from a locker, but I should be able to react to that if I see it.
So you think making a specific reference to statutes would, would be too restrictive?
Unless the sentence was ended with, or other reasons. And I could certainly do that. Okay, perfect.
I'm, I'm okay with that, because I think it gives, it gives like the rationale for the average person, like, yeah, I'm, this is not a, this is not a smoke signal that I'm sending out there. This is like, which is what they're looking for. There's an example, so I kind of get why they might, they would be monitoring for that. But this is like something that doesn't appear to fit in any of those categories.
So, um. Okay, so Travis, do you think, would you be willing to go back and take another crack at crafting a sentence?
Sure.
And I think, so let me ask, would you be, would you be willing and able to send it around prior to the next committee meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, you know, we're, we're running out of daylight for the school year. We've only got, I think, two meetings scheduled after this one? I think it's two, maybe three, at most three. So I think ideally, we want to get this out, we want to get this on the books prior to the start of the next school year, which means that, you know, we're, we're running out of time. So ideally, if you could send around some draft language that responds to these concerns, maybe a week before the next board, the next committee meeting?
I can do that.
And then I will ask committee members to, to look at it as soon as you get it. And if you have any, any concerns or want to suggest some edits or revisions, then alert the rest of the committee so that when we meet next time, we can hopefully finish this, you know, sort of come to a resolution of this issue and vote it out a committee so that the full board can consider it for a first reading.
Fantastic. I absolutely can do that, I'll get that out as soon as possible.
Okay, that would be great, thank you. Okay, um, all right. The next item is.
Thanks again to our staff, I think we're really, really close, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think, yes, I think we can do this. We'll, we'll get it out of committee next time.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next order of business is the Climate Crisis Response Draft Policy. And we have, we've had several revisions, and who, who's, so Liz, who is going to be leading this discussion? Is it going to be us or staff?
I, I think at the outset, you and Scott were going to lead the discussion to walk through how we got to this draft and the work you two directly did to that. Also, I, I don't think we have introduced our newest DSC member, so I wonder if we want to.
Oh, yes.
And I don't know if Nathaniel or Jackson, you want to make a formal introduction, or what would be helpful? If the Oscars here.
Oh, Jackson, do you want to take this?
Yeah, sure. Since Jillian left this committee, we had, I guess, a spot open for another rep. And Oscar Calvert, the rep from MLC, took up that spot.
And Oscar, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but I also want to make sure we acknowledge your presence. Do you want to introduce yourself just briefly and tell us a little bit about?
Hi, I'm Oscar, I use he-they pronouns.
Hi, I'm Oscar. I use he they pronouns and this is my first year on the DSC and yeah, I'm really excited to be on Policy Committee.
Welcome. We're excited to have you. Thank you. Okay.
I'll just plunge in.
Yes, please.
Just in terms of process wise. So since our last exciting episode, Rita and I sat down and so the last draft we saw was the first or one of the first drafts with the four pillars. We sat down and looked at that structure and ended up moving a few items from one pillar to another because they thought they were better aligned. We changed a little bit of language, uh, but made mostly some minor adjustments while trying to keep the spirit of the policy moving forward. And as well, keeping that overarching goal that has a numeric value. That's pretty unique. I I don't know that we have policies that have a numeric value like that in terms of reducing our carbon footprint. We thought that was important to keep though. And then, um, we've been working with Aaron and Monica and other staff to kind of go back and forth to make sure that we're not asking the impossible. And really keeping the focus on what can we do? What's, what's the most effective way to move forward? That has the biggest bang for the buck, so to speak, in terms of reducing our footprint. Though some of the later latest iterations came from Monica around clarifying and expanding language around student engagement. We thought it was important to have things in the policy that engage students around the 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 day to day life of the student, which might not necessarily be a huge step forward in terms of carbon footprint, but impact the, you know, plastic forks in the cafeteria are a thing. And so it's important to include pieces like that. The other language I tried to add in was to say, hey, this is really a it's almost like a 20 year policy that we're looking at. So just because something isn't in the policy doesn't mean we expect it to be addressed right away. Again, uh, part of that is because some of it would involve some pretty extensive infrastructure work that should be best rolled out through our bond program as we rebuild schools to do that most effectively. And other things just just take a long time and immediately aren't really the highest priority in terms of lowering our carbon footprint. Um, and I think Monica had, I mean, just some changes just in the last couple of days. So that's where we are process wise. I ran this by, uh, Mike and Amy and Jane from the Climate Committee who have been done such great work in informing this policy. What I'm hoping for is that this meeting and the next meeting, probably the next meeting, we end up on a good final draft that when we can then take out for public engagement. Because Shanice is just sitting around twiddling her thumbs waiting for things to do. That was a joke.
I think Shanice might be the busiest person I know.
So that's, that's my kind of 30,000 foot look at it. So how about if we have, um, staff weigh in? I think Aaron's our rep right now. Who else? Is here on staff and then ask if, uh, who's here, Mike, Jane and Noel have have any comments after having some time to digest the the draft that I shared with them last week?
I'll just add a couple more things. So our goal between now and the next meeting is to meet with all the departments that are involved. And just to kind of go over each step and make sure, okay, are these still okay? What do we need in order to get to this eventually? What kind of, you know, phase in plan are we looking at? So, uh, we have meetings on the books over the next couple of weeks with Nutrition Services, Transportation and Purchasing and also our Maintenance and Grounds Department to just kind of walk through the specifics as it relates to each of those departments to make sure that everything looks not impossible. And that if it does look close to impossible, how can you strategize to make it work? Um, so there may be a few tweaks. Either there's either going to be tweaks to some of these items or there's going to be tweaks to the way that we have to change the way that the departments operate, which is, you know, going to be an implication of a lot of these, but we just need to make sure that everyone's on the same page and that we can make it doable.
Okay, um, I just want to invite, uh, well, Noel, Jane and Mike, if you have comments, questions.
Yeah, thanks. Um, we have a chance to go through it and overall, um, we were happy with the the edits and think that the document's really shaping out. We really liked, I think, all of the additions that you put in the kind of more specific items under the pillars. Um, and there was some strengthening of some of the wording, so that all looked great. We do have, what I would like categorize as some fairly detailed comments that we won't pull everyone through in this discussion, but would be happy to share them by email, share a markup with our detailed suggestions via email and would be more than happy to also have like a an offline meeting about that to walk through some comments and and questions that we have as well. Um, I think one of the higher level questions and comments we had was we noticed the, um, the item talking about setting a district source energy use intensity goal was taken out and we would love to see that stay in because it's such an impactful source of emissions from PPS, the building's energy use. Yeah, I think I'll I'll just pause there.
I wanted to know also if there's some clarity at this point, Shanice, around community outreach. One of the things we talked to Scott about was that it might not start till the fall. And so we were wondering if we could collaborate a little with you on that. And here's some of your at least initial ideas on how that would work.
Absolutely. I can hop in. I can hop in now. I know there's a question I mean as well. So I think that's right, especially, um, just considering, uh, the, just the next couple of months for for high schools and our schools. And, uh, having and considering our board resolution and the work that you all have done to kind of really build up the crisis, the climate crisis response policy as it stands, I think that, um, there's really, uh, I'm left with some of the next steps in, uh, previous work that has really shaped where we are. And and so a lot of touch points with organizations and and young people. And I think in the spirit of of the resolution and kind of building up the goals for our system, um, that having that participation from frontline communities, I think in folks impacted by climate change and hit hardest, um, I think could be an interesting consideration for for thought partnership or additional insight on some of the priorities that that are called out. And so I think at PPS or Theory of Action especially is is thinking about our communities of color, our Black and Native students and, um, can have some space in the fall where where we do a few things. We have many kinds of spaces where where students are finding a sense of place and belonging and increased resources to kind of build those up. And so I think the between indigenous student unions and Pacific Islander Clubs and BSUs, there's some capacity to reach students in in those spaces, have class visits and connect with our student rep or folks who are participating on the Policy Committee as well, I think, could give some insight on additional pockets of students, including the District Student Council. So I think those are some, uh, initial thoughts. And I know there's some community organizations that may or may not have insight that's already shared. But I know specifically our BIPOC community organizations that have an interest, especially with this intersection of, uh, climate action and youth engagement, um, can be even P O I C, to be honest, is is really engaging with organizations like Verde and Apoano. And so I think those those come up for me. But I think there's a lot of opportunity. You could absolutely work together and think about how we align, right, the the work that's
Thank you. And I actually think that engagement actually moves the policy forward by, you know, starting to live the policy essentially, or continuing to live the policy. So this is, I think, an opportunity to really take our time and do some deep, deep work will further the goals of the policy.
I just want to address Jane's comment about energy use intensity. So we we try to focus on not having a lot of metrics in the policy itself. We do have EUI targets in our design and construction standards already established. So those will be taken care of through through the bond work. And and if you look at goal 1.1, it does have a more vague description of, you know, use appropriate industry standards when designing new and modernized buildings. Um, so that'll, that'll feed into like LEED certification and like net zero ready buildings and EUI targets and that kind of thing.
I had a, oh, I'm sorry. Well, I just, yeah, want to support that. And say that the place for that, I think, is the plan as opposed to the policy or the plans. So I had a follow up question on that and maybe it's for Aaron. One, the goal that we set is net zero ready. Is there a reason why we can't with, um, new construction move just to net zero?
Um, it just depends on, I mean, it's hard to set that right now in terms of like the current bond. Because budgets are set, solar is expensive. So it's just, it's just hard to think about that in this sense, but going forward, we could definitely, we can definitely make that. I mean, I don't want to speak for everybody in the Office of School Modernization here, but I think it's something that we can work towards. And we can probably change that language a little bit. The reason we say net zero ready is because oftentimes solar is not, it's just too expensive, like with all the other competing priorities in in the budgets. And when we already have the the bond budget set for these upcoming projects, then um, we just make a net zero ready and then later on we can add solar at a more cost effective manner. So it's definitely something we can we can discuss though.
And then I just had one more follow up, Aaron, not a follow up, but one more questionnaire. And I didn't quite get everything you said about working with the other departments. So just so I understand, there's some more, um, collaboration feedback you need from the other departments that might impact the draft that we have now?
Yeah, it's just a, just a check in with them. So we're just a courtesy that we're meeting with the department directors and say, okay, here's the most recent version of the draft. Do you have any questions? Do you have any concerns?
Okay, great. And, you know, one of the things, just in closing, a lot of the work we did to get to the draft that we submitted came from collaboration with Aaron and his team and some of the department heads. So I just wanted, or all the department heads, and I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank them because they put in a lot of time to to get to this point and it was really appreciated. Trying to invest it upfront saves time later down the line. So okay, any questions from committee members? Julia?
I have a question, um, but I I do want to just, um, thank Jane and Mike and the community members who did the really heavy lift to, um, construct what I think is a groundbreaking policy draft. And so I really want to thank, um, you all for bringing that and I'm looking forward to like your your details, uh, your detailed sort of feedback on this draft and thank Rita and Scott for, um, sort of moving it through the process. And I don't have a lot of big changes, but I'm I'm glad we sort of pivoted away from, hey, just have a big, like a big broad vision statement in policy and then and that's it. I think this is really, well, uh, created a great framework for the district in how we think about our work. So and I think it's really comprehensive and does a great job. And I look forward to, you know, where there may be gaps or things missing that, um, Shanice and team, when they, um, talk to our students in the community, that that gets flushed out. But, um, I'm excited about the work and really appreciate, um, all the community engagement that has happened to date and that, um, we've got a solid draft, uh, to move forward.
Ailey has a sick child, so she may be attending. Um, Jackson?
I don't have anything, just making sure to check in. Um, I think it's called the Climate Student Advisory Group or Climate. There's a climate advisory group with students, just to make sure to check in with them. Yeah, otherwise I think I like it. It looks really good.
Um, I think this is a good policy and I think it allows PPS to step in the direction towards. And what actually, when reading this, it came, you know, we're entering environment where we're preparing for, uh, climate change rather than saying, uh, let's prevent it. So it was kind of and reminding me that we're entering different stage with young climate change and that this is a good step to ensure that we're prepared.
That's an important piece of it. Great, okay, if, um, shoot me and or Rita an email if reading over it and another thought occurs. I I think, uh, when we do go out, uh, for that engagement, I know every time that we've talked to students about it, they want to get that specifics. They want to get to the nugget of the plan, which is great. And I think it's important to remind folks there's policy and there's there's plan. And what what the difference is going forward so that we don't end up in a wow, I'm really frustrated because I had all these particulars that I thought should be in it. That that's kind of a, I think, an important distinction to keep in mind. As we move through this. Okay, I think we're good then. Um, so Mike and Jane and Noel, um, I'll shoot you an email and let's, uh, set up a time Mike and Jane and Noel, I'll shoot you an email and let's set up a time real quick. Do you think staff need to be in on that? Or?
I think it would be helpful if Aaron and or Monica, at least, was part of that meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Rita, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So just thinking about timing, how soon do you think you, you know, that group can get together and and consider additional edits? Do you think it can happen prior to the next committee meeting? Can we shoot for that?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Okay.
Definitely on my end. It's it's up to Aaron.
Yeah, I think, Aaron, when we talked, what, 10 days ago, there was, the goal was to have done those staff reviews before the May 10 meeting. So I would look to you to make sure, work with Scott to try to get that sequencing right. And maybe the sequencing doesn't matter that, but I'm guessing it would be better to finish the staff reviews than have the meeting with Mike and Amy.
Yeah, we have a couple. Yeah, that makes sense. We have a couple this week and a couple next week. So yeah, I don't see a reason why we couldn't schedule it in between. It's up to you, Scott. I'm flexible.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Let's touch base and we'll figure out how to set up a meeting timely.
Okay. So I think just to just to remind everybody, like what this is going to mean ultimately, we are not going to be, this committee, this iteration of the Policy Committee is is not going to be able to vote it out for a first reading because we're going to, we're going to get it as as refined as we can make it. And then it's going to have to be on pause pending the community engagements that will happen next fall. So just sort of making sure everybody understands, like, how this is going to work out. I am going to make a request that the incoming board members, following the election, one of the things that ends up in their onboarding packet, assuming we have one, is this policy so that they can be brought up to speed, like from the get-go, and can be, it can be kept apprised of the development, even if they're not on the Policy Committee ultimately. And then my final request is going to be that Scott and I be invited whenever this comes before the board next fall for for adoption. It would be nice if Scott and I could be there to applaud. So, anyway, okay, so we'll continue. We will tentatively put it on the agenda for the next meeting. If by some chance you guys don't get a chance to to meet up and we're not ready, we can postpone it. But but I think it would be nice, I like the momentum we've got going here. So it would be nice if we could keep that up until we settle on a draft that that we're pretty, pretty happy with. And we can, and at that point, we can put it on pause and hand it off to the next generation of Policy Committee people. Okay?
Well, just one more thing. And I apologize, our student rep on the Climate Working Group is, is that you, Jackson?
It was Nathaniel and myself. I couldn't make the last meeting, but yeah.
So do you want to be involved in our our meeting with Jane at all?
I would like to. I have a pretty busy schedule. So like, don't like, try to schedule around me. I'll make it if I can.
I'll just keep you all informed. Awesome.
Okay. All right. So thank you to everybody who's been working on this. It's, I, I, I think we're really heading toward a nice final draft. Okay, let's move on to the next item. This is going to be led by Mary Kane. And it's kind of a, it's going to be a sort of extended introduction to a suite of policy changes that we're going to have to be considering. And this is the first time we've broached this subject. So Mary's going to walk us through why we're looking at a suite of anti-harassment policies and what we need to do with them. So I'll hand it off to Mary.
Thank you, Rita. So the 2019 legislature passed a number of statutes around sexual harassment, harassment. And we have been working for the last year and a half incorporating them into our policies and or creating new policies such as the workplace harassment policy. We were starting on developing new policies to to fulfill those requirements and realized that just adding a number of other policies was was more confusing, would be more confusing to readers. You don't know which policy you fall under and how it works. And so we took a more holistic approach and 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 looked at the policies we currently have and looked to see where we could incorporate some of the new required language or processes into our already existing policies so that it's a kind of a one-stop shopping. While we were looking at this, we also reviewed some of our policies, current policies, to see if they actually may made any sense. And and so what you see in the, there's, there are two matrices. The one that we're going to focus on is the, for this committee are the policies. But just for your edification, I wanted to tell you that we've also been working on the administrative directives as well, to look at the different processes. But and Liz was so helpful in in helping me put the final touches on these policies. And so what you can see is we have incorporated, in one instance, the two student student-centered policies, 430060 and 430070.
I wonder if we might get Roseanne or someone to put the ma, the matrix up. So when you're referencing the numbers, people can follow along on the screen. I think that might be helpful.
Just a moment, I'll be happy to get that up.
Super. Well, Roseanne's doing that. I just want to say to Mary and Leanne, who have like, been working on this stuff and grinding through it for a long time, the statutes that were passed, I mean, they're a difficult group to reconcile, and they have a lot of specific requirements. So it's instead of being able to craft kind of an objective-driven set of policies, the statutes say, the school district policies shall say this, and then repeats in a slightly different subject area, and then repeats again in a slightly different subject area. And so it's from a drafting perspective, I think it's it's difficult. And I I expect at some point that someone in the legislature is going to try to make those work together better, but that's not where we are. And so the the hard work that Mary and Leanne have done to try to slog through those is really admirable. So I am grateful, actually, for all the work they've done. All right, we should have the matrix up in just a second. And for anyone following along on the work plan, these were, no, no worries. These were formally labeled the Title IX policies, but they're actually quite broader than Title IX, which is just a federal statute. So we thought it made sense to refer to them as the anti-harassment policies. But if they're not intended to be different, just more appropriately labeled.
I can, can I share it? Do you have it up? Wonderful. Thanks. So can everyone see the matrix for the policies of the policies?
The enlargement is is gratefully accepted by those of us who are old.
So what we have done is made amendments to existing, to the existing anti-harassment, non-discrimination policy, 1020, also made amendments to the workplace harassment policy that was just passed, I think, was it last year? That's 510060. And then to the professional conduct policy. And I'm sorry, it was just before the full board in February, but we needed to include, this is what Liz was referring to earlier, the the definition of sexual harassment in the various statutes is slightly different. And so in order for one policy to kind of be compliant of all, for all the statutory requirements, we we just need to, we needed to add some additional language. The one big change is in the student, the two student policies. One is 4.30060 anti-harassment, and the other is 4.30070 teen dating policy. The anti-harassment policy is really focused on bullying, cyberbullying, and it 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 melds well with the teen dating violence, domestic violence policy, because that too is also directed around cyber stalking, sexting, harassing. And so we we incorporated the requirements of the two policies into a single policy. So we're asking that you we need to rename it 430060. But then, and then once you look at the language and see how we've incorporated the teen dating policy into that, then we can rescind the teen dating policy. We can also rescind the, or we're recommending that we rescind the grievance procedure sex discrimination. This is a policy from 1976, and it outlines Title IX as, I mean, it's a, it's a lovely historical relic, but it it doesn't reflect current Title IX requirements. We're also recommending that we rescind the sexual harassment staff to student. I don't remember offhand when this, this is also a very old statute. And and we address the behavior in the professional conduct policy. It's not necessary here.
Mary?
Yes?
Um, just a comment, I would suggest that on our written materials, that if we're rescinding something because it actually is covered somewhere else, that we be like crystal clear that that is versus like, we're just rescinding our, you know, policy relating to teen dating violence, just so that that always travels that like, it's not that we're getting rid of the the concept, but it's incorporated. And some something else, it's just, it worries me to, if you do a quick scan, just to see that second column.
Right.
And so how do we?
We can, what I can do is expand on that in the staff report. Leanne and I can work together to explain very clearly the why we are asking for rescission of certain of certain policies. I guess my assumption was that these would go as a portfolio together. But I don't know what you're, you all are thinking. If you want to take them one at a time, we haven't.
It's just an overarching comment that, because things are going to, people are going to look at individual, like, hey, they're going to rescind this policy. It's just like, it's almost like, you know, say, let's take the teen dating violence, domestic violence policy, like rescind slash, you know, content move to whatever number. It's almost just like taking the far right-hand column and marry it with that second column so that it's clear, like, we're not rescinding the concept. It's just going somewhere else.
I can do that.
Thank you.
And I do recommend, to your question, Mary, I mean, this is obviously very much a committee member's call, but to the extent possible, I think having these as a suite of policies moving together gives context to how they all work together. And keeping them as a package, if possible, is helpful as people are understanding what the board is trying to accomplish.
It's our intention to work on them all together because there is so much that they are so interrelated. And we have a subgroup that is meeting on May 3. So
The intent, there's an air in the agenda, actually, and I apologize for not catching it before now, that the staff recommends voting out of committee today, but that is actually not what the staff recommendation was, even though staff, including me, worked on the agenda. So to be clear, the the goal with today was to have an introduction to, for the full committee to see what the the suite of policies that are involved, have Mary walk through at a high level. And then that May 3 meeting that's already calendared is to be where the work group can dig in on a more detailed level and look at those with more more specificity. Okay, so does everybody who is on the work group know that they're on the work group? So my understanding, it's Ailey and Julia. And I'm not entirely sure, I believe Jillian was on the work group. So
Jackson. And Leanne.
Okay. Okay, so we will be revisiting this, I think, at our next meeting on May 10. That was the plan. Okay. All right. So any other questions before we move on to the next thing?
This is just a general question. Are we going to have a break at 1:30, like a five-minute?
Well, I think, I was thinking actually of having a break right now.
I wouldn't be opposed to that either.
Because I think we're, we're blowing through this agenda, which is a little unusual for us. So we had a schedule.
Don't jinx us, Rita. Don't jinx us.
Okay, we are not ahead of schedule. So but we are able now to take a break. So do you want to make it 10 minutes? Okay, so we'll meet back here at 1:20. And next on the agenda is a discussion of some technical amendments to the complaint policy. And these have come up relatively recently. And and they're considered important enough that we need to reopen the complaint policy, which we had kind of put on pause. And I'm going to make a suggestion that that we take this opportunity, since we're reopening the policy anyway, and we need to get some technical changes into the policy prior to the start of the next school year. I'm going to suggest that we reopen the entire policy and consider consider making we consider sending out for a first reading the entirety of the complaint policy as we have revised it. If you recall, the complaint policy came onto the agenda of the Policy Committee last fall.
driven largely by some, a request by staff to make some technical changes at that point in order to respond to some issues that have arisen over the last two and a half years of implementing the policy. Since we were opening up the policy, we also took the opportunity over many, many months to look at the entire policy and make a substantial number of revisions. Most of them intended to clarify the language and make the complaint process more accessible, more understandable and more accessible to students and families. And we had largely reached consensus on the draft, but there were some issues that one committee member requested that we pause the policy pending additional community engagement. And so we did that in March, but I think at this point, since we're reopening the complaint policy again, I think it's in the best interest of the students and families that we have the best possible complaint policy on the books in force by the beginning of the next academic year. So I'm going to request, I'm going to propose to the committee that we look not only at these most recent technical changes, but also take another look at all of the revisions that we have considered over the past, it's probably been at least six months. So are there any objections to that proposal?
I just have a question about kind of what changed and why it has become urgent now, when it wasn't, I guess, a month and a half ago.
I'm going to ask Liz to respond.
So we looked at the collection of changes that, as this policy, when it was put on pause, would be not updated on our website for many months, but if engagement started next fall before, hopefully by the end of the year, it would have been through. So we looked at where the clarifying proposed languages, that's all the yellow highlighted portions that can either clarify, there's a rotten OAR reference, it's just inaccurate. Those changes were designed to be those that would be very helpful to those utilizing the policy between now and the end of the year. There's some discretion in what's included and what's not of those changed policy, of those recommended changes, but that was the gist is that they were mostly clarifying or technical corrections. And we didn't, I don't think when the committee made the decision in March to pause, we really stopped to reflect on what those technical changes might be and how they might be helpful between now and the end of the calendar year.
So Jackson, maybe a different, just perspective also to share is, I was on the sort of work group on the technical changes and over the last several days, over the last week, there's been a number of back and forth. One of the changes is primarily to protect and clarify the superintendent's role in complaints, in the complaint process. And I was willing to like have that be expedited. I'm not supportive of undoing the pause and moving ahead because I just found out last night at like 10:40 that this, that the broader package was going to be moved. And just like with the climate policy, I think we got some initial feedback that was done by staff last year, a pretty comprehensive report that was feedback from former complainants that shared their perspective of the policy and their engagement with the complaint process at PPS. That to me, you know, somebody from, you know, who's been on the other side as a parent, I think we should consider all those things together. And I'm fine, I'm fine with the very technical pieces and the one piece that probably staff has highlighted, which is again, being clear about the superintendent and his administrative role versus sort of a broader role of filing complaint against the superintendent. But I think we should go back and have, you know, a longer conversation and more community engagement, just like we're going to be doing with the climate, the climate policy. And then bringing the substantive and non-technical changes back to the committee and then having a first reading. So I say, I do see, there could be an argument for the technical changes to expedite them, but the rest, I don't particularly see that there's a rationale that they need to be rushed through.
Well, I would argue that these revisions would hardly be rushed through. We've been looking at this policy, I mean, prior to putting it on pause in March, we looked at this policy for, I haven't added up the months, but it's, I mean, grand total, probably eight months, at least six. We, it was on, as I recall, pretty much every meeting agenda during that time. So we went through, I think, an enormous amount of work to develop all of the revisions. I think the only revision that's here that we probably didn't, didn't consider in excruciating detail was the draft alternative preamble, which I think was a late addition.
Actually, when we paused, it was so that we could have community engagement with relating to the feedback that we got about the policy. And we did have a lot of discussion about the changes that we made to date, but we hadn't yet had community engagement around either the changes we were proposing or other changes.
So. But most of the changes that we made, as I recall, were essentially, they were not changing the process itself. They were intended to clarify what the process is. And it's within, you know, even if this committee and this current board adopts the complaint policy, it is, you know, future, the future board and a future iteration of a policy committee can certainly reopen it to have the community engagement and talk about further revisions. But I think it's, I think it's a missed opportunity to keep the existing complaint policy largely unchanged, with the exception of a few relatively minor revisions that are highlighted in yellow now, but keep all of the rest of the language that we found wanting eight months ago on the books.
Right, but we haven't had any community engagement over this process. We had one survey, which showed that people's experience with the complaint process is like woefully inadequate. And raised, for me, it raised a lot of questions and good questions that we should answer. And it may be after we go through that process, we still land on the same language, but we haven't gone through that process. So when we had this discussion in March and decided to put it on pause, I was okay with putting it on pause because that was going to have happened. And like I say, it's new news to me as of last night that we're going to go ahead without engagement with the other changes versus the technical changes.
So I agree with Rita here, Julia, that I think the language changes that are being proposed in this document and the yellow technical changes are sort of all of one piece, as far as taking the feedback we have gotten and saying, here's some low hanging fruit, here are some fixes we can make to this process now. And that as far as, you know, doing further engagement and changing the complaint process, that that's a really valid point, but this doesn't change the complaint process. This tries to more rapidly address the feedback we got from families feeling like the complaint process isn't user-friendly, feeling like they aren't heard, to sort of clarify and support that now. And that for me, doing this first reading and bringing this forward now doesn't end the conversation about the complaint process or the complaint policy. It's just a next step in that journey of being more responsive and more transparent with the public. So I think it's, I would like to see us move more quickly on this because I think, you know, we want to be responsive to our community and the need that folks have to have a clear and transparent pathway to make those complaints and to feel sort of certain about the process. And I think this new language really helps us to do that.
I don't see any of the language, with the very few exceptions. I think it's mostly from the district side. I don't think it reflects the feedback that we received or that we even had a discussion about it. And that, so I mean, I just, I just went back today and we looked at the memo and the survey and there wasn't anybody that, like, we didn't share the policy or like, here's the issues you raised. And like I say, it wasn't just mildly critical, it was very critical of like how the process seems, you know, unfair, not responsive, hard to find. So to me, I don't think that was part of our process. And so I'm just, if the, will the committees to move it out, that's fine. I just want to be clear that when I was asked two weeks ago to participate in the technical corrections, it was based on the premise of there's a very narrow range of issues and one very important issue that we want to move right, that we need to move right now. And that's how I engaged with the larger process. But it wasn't that we were going to move this other package without community engagement.
I'd just like to note that at least one of the revisions that we talked about at great length, that that helped to precipitate this committee taking another look at the complaint policy is not among those that are highlighted. So, and it's, what is it, under 4D, other provisions. There's some important changes that were made to to the language around the resources that are available to complainants. And that was, you know, last summer, that was considered sufficiently important that it, you know, precipitated us taking another look at this complaint policy to begin with. And it's not included in the late, among the highlighted sections that your work group worked on. And it just seems to me that this draft was, we worked on it at great length, it was a fairly high intensity effort over many months. I think it is a better text. I think, I think the revised text is much more accessible to students and families. It does not change the actual process. And that might be, I mean, that might well be something that the future board wants to take a look at and change. And I would agree that in that case, it probably would be helpful to get additional community engagement. But in the meantime, I don't, I don't see it as useful to keep on the books language that we knew eight months ago was not effective. Scott, I see you, you've unmuted, do you want to say something?
Well, this is what I was in favor of a couple of months ago. So we're, I think the board is going to have to come back relatively soon to revisit this policy. We talked, for example, about changing from a three-step to a two-step process to streamline it and make it, and I think that's probably a really good idea. And I think that would be important to do sooner rather than later. But that's going to require some public engagement. In the meantime, we need to make some changes. They're going to improve the process, they're not going to get us to where we need to be. I think the board has acknowledged that. And come fall, will be a time to reengage with the public around this policy. But right now, let's get it done. That's, this is sort of.
Without parent engagement, I mean, just, I'm sorry, that's what I feel like is being, was being done. We, because, because we talked very deliberately, it's like, yes, we need to do that and we're, we're going to do it at a time in the future. And now it's like, but now we're not going to do it. And that's, I mean, that's, I guess I'm, I thought we'd agreed upon a path.
Which of this, which of the specific changes give you heartburn?
I'm, it gives me heartburn to move ahead with changes to the policy without following up with the parent engaged, the parent responses that we got from people who engage with the complaint process.
I think.
Like moving from three to two may be the right thing to do, but I also want to hear from parents whether that's the right thing to do. So I don't.
I'm agreeing with you.
I don't necessarily, I don't, I don't know, because like we did a survey, it came back very negative about the policy and that we agreed, like, we need to engage with the broader community and this, you know, some people who've had experience with the complaint policy. And then now we're deciding that that's going to happen at some point in the future. So I, just from a process standpoint, I, I say, I support it. I'd like to pass the climate policy, you know, get a first read and move it on. But the, what we heard earlier today is like, we need to engage a broader group of people before we move that, so.
Yeah, I think here's the difference for me between, between the, I mean, it's, but we're slightly different technical plans. So the first is, I think we all agree, we need to do further engagement around the complaint process and around the complaint needs. I think we can, what I feel like is, we can make some immediate changes that will make this better in the interim while we wait to do that longer community engagement. So we're not saying we're not going to do it, we are still going to do community engagement in the future, we're still going to work on the complaint process. But can we right now, after doing the technical fixes, change some language to help make this even clearer for families? This is not ending this policy. With the climate policy, I feel like with that one, when we do, we're hoping to end it, right? We're going to do this community engagement and we're going to finish the policy. This is a step in the work on the complaint policy. This isn't the completion of the complaint policy. So that for me is the difference here, is this is the language and the technical pieces that we can easily adjust on the complaint policy while we do further work on the complaint policy piece. It's kind of like on Saturday with the board leadership question, you know, we have some bigger conversations to have as a board about what is the role of the chair, how does the chair and the vice chair relate? What does it mean to have, you know, these roles? But we created a more equitable elections process. Now, that's not going to solve all the problems, but it makes it more clear and more transparent around board leadership. I feel like the complaint, what we're doing in the complaint process is akin to the board leadership election process, which doesn't necessarily mean we're making board leadership more equitable or we've dealt with all the issues inherent in leadership. It just makes it, it's the first step in making this better. And that's what I feel about this proposed language in the complaint process.
I appreciate that, except for all the people who have a relative importance. I, I appreciate that. Um, except for all the people who have a relative point of view or at the table, with the exception of potentially the new, the new board, new board members. The difference is we asked for people's opinion, they gave it to us, and we're just going to move on and say like, the next board is going to, um, is, is going to deal with that. And I just, I, I, I don't agree with that. And to me, if, if there were things that were technical, then I was opened, you know, there was a menu of things like here, well, here's what we think from a staff perspective. It's technical, went through it. And I think 95% of the time, like I agreed on what was technical. And like, okay, this needs to be done now. The other ones, like I, I don't think need to be done now. And I guess I wanted, from my perspective, um, I'm not, and I re- I respect that appears that three people want to move ahead. I, and, but I'm not supportive of moving ahead, um, with that process. So, but, you know, everybody makes their own choice, makes their own choice. I'm, but I'm not supportive of, of that.
Well, I would argue that most of the revisions that are in here, probably all of them, are to some degree actually responsive to the feedback that we got. Um, because a lot of the feedback was it's an arcane policy that's very hard to follow. I don't understand what I'm supposed to do or how it's supposed to work. And most of these revisions are intended to clarify for people, um, what the existing policy is. Whether it's, I mean, it's, it's a separate point, whether, um, whether the policy, the, um, the actual complaint process needs to be changed. Um, I think that's an open question, um, that we're not going to be able to answer now. Um, but there are some changes that we can make now that will improve the process that's, that exists. Um, and I think it's, I think it's in the best interests of students and families to move ahead with these revisions that will clarify. Um, and then the next board can certainly reopen the question and talk about substantive changes to the polit- to the process itself. There, there's nothing that we're going to be doing here that will preclude, um, further revision of the complaint policy.
Okay, I, I think the arguments are on the table, um, from the adults. Be interested in hearing from the students if, uh, you have a point of view on this.
Um, yeah, um, we keep saying additional feedback. We never elicited feedback around any of our changes. We just asked generally, how is this process for you? Um, so I just like to clarify that. We never really asked how any of these changes, any parents, um, and students were never involved from the get-go. Um, so generally, I'm kind of against any moving forward of policies that don't include at least some student involvement. Um, and I do, I think that's all I have at this point. I honestly only reviewed the technical changes because that's all I thought we were moving forward on. So I'd be uncomfortable at this point, moving forward if I was a board member because I haven't gotten to review all of the changes that we are moving forward with. Um, the one that really jumps out to me is changing the timeline for both the district and the complaints submitting information before like the hearing. Um, we're changing it to 24 hours before. Um, that is, in my opinion, pretty big. Um, so yeah, that's what I have to say about it, I guess.
Um, we're, we're going to make these changes. Let's ensure that, um, uh, that they're adequate and let's, uh, bring them back to people to see, uh, if they complete, you know, or if they answer some of the questions they had, or changes are accurate, or the concerns they had about the existing process.
I, I would say, um, I mean, I don't disagree. Um, and I think there is, um, there will be an opportunity for the next board and the next iteration of the policy committee to do exactly that. Um, but in the meantime, um, we can make some changes in the language that will clarify what the existing process is. Um, because realistically, any, um, I, I, I would hazard a guess that, um, any community engagement process, especially if it's going to, um, if it's going to include really substantive changes to the complaint process itself. Um, I, I would expect that the, um, a, a next addition of the process and the policy would end up not happening until probably sometime next spring. Um, which means that for a year, um, the existing policy would be in place. And we already know that a lot of the language in it is extremely difficult to understand. And there are a number of technical fixes, um, that staff want that we would not be, that would not be included in the existing policy. So this is by no means the, the last opportunity to address the complaint policy. Um, this is an interim step. We can make it better than it is now. It's not going to be, you know, still needs work, but at least it will be better than it is now. And it will be on the books for next school year.
Well.
Just, oh, sorry, go ahead, Oscar.
Let's just make sure that this clarifies the concerns and, uh, by asking our families if this clarifies that we shouldn't move forward with something without making sure that it clarifies the concerns that people have.
So the problem is that we, w- when the question of additional community engagement came up, uh, the decision was that under the current circumstances, we really can't. We, we don't have the opportunity. Um, students and families, remember this is much. Students and families were going to be, you know, for the rest of the school year, we're going to be, you know, thoroughly occupied with returning to classrooms and finishing up the year and, and all of that. So it, it wasn't going to be possible to do the kind of community engagement that it would take to get the kind of feedback that you're asking for. Um, and that just is what it is. Um, but in the meantime, we, we think that these revisions, we, we as a committee, I mean, we, we talked at great length about most of these revisions, about all of them, great length. Um, we have chewed over the language endlessly. Um, it's our best attempt at this point to address at least some of the problems that, um, exist in the current language. And I, I think.
Rita, I mean, what I'm hearing you, uh, what I'm hearing you, we can either do this now and address what we have heard, or we can wait a year, leaving what we know is problematic and not helpful on the books, because we don't have time to do community engagement in this moment. So we have a choice to make whether we continue to allow what we know is not helpful policy to sit on the books, or we can do this kind of some quick fixes here now, knowing that we have more work to do. But that, that if we, to get to the ideal part is going to take us a year. So I'm in favor of doing what we can to be responsive to the, the, we are, we had a survey and people gave us their feedback. We are being responsive. I, I also struggle with the, we want to do community engagement, but there's a level of, we asked for people's opinions, they gave them to us. We can be responsive and make changes. Yes, we're going to go back to the community eventually to further, um, smooth out this process. But it's, at what point, I mean, and then we make changes and then we go back and then we make changes and then we go back. That's the cyclical nature of policy. But at what point do we put something on the books? Because until it's on the books, we're still stuck with what's actually technically there, which we know is wrong. Um, so I don't want us to, we, we need to do community engagement and it's super important. But I don't want us to continue to cause problems for families because we don't have capacity to do community engagement for another year. And so that's my concern. And I feel like this is important to, to begin this process, to be responsive in the ways we know we can now.
We haven't asked our families if this is an adequate solution. So how do we know if this is adequate for our families, uh, change for the next year? If we haven't asked them.
Have you reviewed the, Oscar, have you taken time to review the prior policy? What the family said and the current policy? Okay, some of it is direct feedback from what people said in their, um, responses.
I understand, but I think we still, it, it should still be, you know, families should still give their input on what we have in front of us right now.
To do that, we don't have the capacity to do that until next year.
So that's the choice we're making. And, and when a.
We don't have that option. That's always the best option, but we don't have that option right now.
We have that option. Um, so the question I would have for staff is just, um, the, the technical changes that are highlighted, does that get you what you need in the short term? Cause that was my understanding that of the technical changes is that what it was needed in the, in the short term for, by the, by the end of this, end of this year. So that, I mean, that's the spirit and by which I engaged in the technical corrections work group is that, you know, try and work with the staff to get what was needed and what was truly technical. So we get, you know, I, I'm, I'm okay expediting something, um, without going back to parents in the community if they're technical in the nature. It's just the, the rest of it isn't. So my question for staff is, do you have what you need in the technical corrections?
Julie, I think the highlighted areas are the ones we thought were most needed uh, at the earliest level or so simple and clarifying, like the corrected OAR reference that it made sense to use them there. I think, um, what, the phrase I'm struggling with is, is what we need. That was, those highlighted changes are the ones we recommended that had the greatest sense of urgency or, um, made sense to include because they're just rather obvious and straightforward and non-substantive.
And probably don't need per- parent or community engagement. Like, we're not going to ask people, are you okay with us changing a statute?
I agree. I agree. Okay, I'm going to call the question. Um, I'm going to ask board members to vote on the question of whether you are in favor of, um, reopening, excuse me?
Clarify something first.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the document that was in the board book had only the technical changes.
The document in the board book was, um, it inadvertently, when originally posted, suppressed the red lines as they existed at the time the policy was, um, paused in March. So on Saturday morning, and Roseanne can correct me on the timeline, but I think on Saturday morning, that was the right version. So it had the highlighted portions, but it was converted to the full red line. So everyone could see the highlighted recommended technical changes on top of where the policy was last left off in terms of recommended changes. The highlighted, the hi- the yellow highlighting is the, represents the technical changes proposed. Everything else goes back to March. Right. But, but in fact, um, I, I mean, the, so the question is, um, you've, you've highlighted, uh, I don't know, three or four specific language, okay, a few more than that.
More than that, it's more than that.
Yeah, it's more than that. Um, but you've highlighted, you know, a, a relatively few very specific language changes that, um, that you want to have, you want us to, um, approve. Um, but, um, what need, what I need to clarify is that in the absence of reopening the entire document, those very few highlighted changes would be made to the policy that is on the books right now.
Correct.
It would include none of the other red line changes that are included in this document. So we go back to the original. Co- correct. So, so i- if the technical changes only were voted out, the document that would be posted would be just those changes on the existing policy. But for the committee's full context about, because you had worked on this, and maybe that was more confusing. I thought it was actually helpful because I think when you decide what's a technical amendment or not, there was some discretion used about what was included. And I wanted the committee to see what our recommendations that were highlighted stood up to what we chose and what we didn't, um, of the, the changes that had been proposed before the May, or the March pause. So Scott, did that answer your question?
Right. So now I'm, I didn't, I had the earlier version. Now I've got the whole.
Yeah, it was confusing, Scott, because how it was posted for the committee agenda was this was some of the technical changes. And so then, when you, if you went on on Saturday, it wasn't actually, it wasn't clear what it was. And so it wasn't until yesterday that it was changed so that you saw both the other changes and the technical changes. And it wasn't until last night that it was proposed that actually it wouldn't just be the technical changes that we'd be considering today in committee.
I don't know, Roseanne, when were the, when was the full red line apparent in board books? When did that happen?
Uh, I think it was, I think it was yesterday.
Yeah, because I, I don't think I, I think I downloaded them Sunday. Anyway, regardless.
Okay, so the, the question at hand is, um, uh, and this is for board members, are you, are you willing to reconsider the entire policy, um, and, and all of the revisions, you know, all of the redlined revisions that, um, the committee considered? Um, as opposed to simply the, the very few, um, changes that are highlighted in yellow? Are you willing to reopen the whole policy for consideration?
Yes.
No.
Scott?
Not, not to move it out of committee. Um, I'm, I'm open to having the, to, to reopen the policy, but it's also going to be, my expectation would be with commu- it would be with community engagement before we move the other changes. So I'm not opposed to reopening. Obviously, I think it still needs a lot of work, but I think it needs, so. I'm fine with the technical package of changes that staff said they need that were technical.
Okay, understood. Scott?
Yep.
Okay. Um, all right. So, uh, I'm not suggesting that we voted out of committee today. I would suggest that since it's been a while, since we all looked at it, um, I'm, I'm suggesting that, um, we come back on May 10th and, um, consider the, the full package of revisions. And is it help, is it helpful as we prepare materials for that? I guess would ask all the committee members what, what you need for that review? Would you like the yellow highlighted taken out? Would you like it kept in? How, how can we support the next step? Cause I know we have a quick turn. Well, I.
Go ahead, Rita, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to, I, I do think it's helpful to highlight because these are, these are the newest additions. Um, so I think it is helpful. We, we haven't, as a committee, been able to, we haven't, we haven't discussed these, these newest changes at all, as opposed to a lot of the others.
Several of the highlighted, most of the highlighted changes are the same. They're just highlighted, just so you know. Um.
Oh, okay.
Just.
Yeah. So from, from my perspective, um, I'd like to have, um, the technical. I'd like to have the technical corrections package, at least be in some other, like, keep it highlighted or something so that we know what is considered technical. Again, just like the package of policies that came to us previously, I'm not expecting like a deep parental engagement process around around those because I view them as primarily technical. Like, we're moving content of one policy to another policy, and so therefore I'm okay with a sort of expedited policy. And so I want to just be clear, I'm okay with an expedited review if it's really needed, without going through sort of the parental or family or community engagement process. So I'd like to keep those two at least a separate color so that I can distinguish between those two, because that is the process that I engaged in over the last week, or two weeks of, like, what's technical.
Well, then I, then I think we we start getting into the, you know.
That, it's okay.
I, so let me finish my sentence. We have a number of revisions that were in here from the very beginning because at the time they were considered technical that are not at this point identified, they are not highlighted as technical changes. But at the time when we actually considered them, they were, they were framed as technical changes. So I think it's
I'm open to staff coming back with, we think these these other ones are technical. I mean, clearly some of them are substantive. But so how I engaged is like, here's what we think is the technical ones. And I just went through like, yes, 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 maybe tell me more. Yes, 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 is kind of how I went through that set of packages. And so if something is technical, but it's not highlighted as technical, it's not because I objected to it that it's, and thought it not technical, but it just wasn't flagged. So happy to consider other ones that are technical, the ones that we don't think need to have any sort of community engagement. That is, I'm open to that.
Okay, so I think for the next meeting, I do think we correct me if I'm wrong, but as I recall, the draft alternative preamble was a relatively recent edition when we left it in March. So we might want to look at that a little more deeply than some of the others. Any objection to that?
No, because I view that as non-substantive, not that it's not substantive, but it's not a, like, directional, it's you know, a statement of values. I would also ask that just back to Scott's question to the two student reps on the committee, is, you know, getting feedback from the district student council on, frankly, most of the, a lot of the complaints we have are, you know, parents filing complaints on behalf of their students. So any sort of feedback of, like, also whether you think those are technical or not?
I had just an overarching question. From the user guide that was proposed, I think in like August of last year, are we still requiring, like, RESJ lens to be filled out at the beginning? And if so, could I have it for this policy?
I don't know that there's an existing document that satisfies that request, Jackson. We can look and see. If there is, you can have it.
As we go through this at our next meeting, we may end up with just the yellow. It could very well be after discussion. But there may be some other things that we decide are technical and won't be an improvement. So.
Well.
What's next?
Okay, I just want to clarify that we're going to be looking at the entire document. And I, I would strongly suggest that everybody go through this document with a pretty close read prior to the next committee meeting. We are not going to be able to relitigate every every word in this document. So we want to we want to focus on identifying changes that are that will improve the experience of people who are interested in figuring out the complaint policy. Whether they, whether those changes would qualify as technical somehow, I don't think that's really the the essential question. I think the essential question is do these, do these revisions make the policy more accessible?
So if we're going to go, going to go through each of them, again, I'm only willing to move something on an expedited basis without community engagement that is somewhat technical in nature. If, for each of the changes that are proposed, if there can be something written writing from staff about the rationale, and it can be like, you know, wrong statute number, I mean, as simple as that.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm, I'm gonna I'm going to exercise the chair's prerogative and say, I'm not going to ask staff to do that. All of these changes we talked about over the course of eight months. I don't think we need to have staff spend their time coming up with a rationale for every line in this document. So I
Well, I feel like I would like to, if we're going to be looking at the whole thing, I'd like to ask some people what they think. And I'm so I mean, I can put my my impression of what the rationale is. So I'm happy to do that. I can do the work myself. I thought it might be a more objective and neutral document to have, like, here's, here's why this change was made.
Okay. That's, that's your prerogative. But it's also worth noting that there are great many word changes in here, and most of them, in fact, came from the committee rather than staff as a result of extensive, extended, sometimes excruciating discussion over many months.
Of a very limited group of people. I'm just, I'm just saying, like, I want to go out and if there's a rationale, and actually the base changes that originally came to us were recommendations from staff. You go back and look at the documents. So again, I'm always happy to put forward whatever the rationale is and that's being proposed. And Liz asked what we needed, and that's, you know, seemed, I'm just, just answer the question that was asked of the committee.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we've exhausted this topic. So, okay, so we will talk about this at the May 10 meeting. And I think that I think those are the only things that we have on the agenda with the exception of public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have Beth Kavanaugh. I just turned over to the panelists. She should be available in a sec.
Hello. My name is Beth Kavanaugh. She/her pronouns, C-A-V-A-N-A-U-G-H. As most of you know, I've been working with a group of parents and teachers across the district advocating for reform to the current foundation fundraising policy that allows individual communities to hire additional teachers and staff in their schools. And yet the status quo persists month after month. I'm disappointed to be here again at the end of April after this policy having been pushed off the agenda multiple times since January, but I still have hope that you will demonstrate the leadership necessary to commit to addressing this policy this year. My group has heard each current member of the board acknowledge the inequitable results of this policy. We've presented data illustrating the differences between the distribution of these funds across PPS schools. We've seen communities with longstanding foundations take steps to increase visibility of this issue by hosting meetings to discuss the topic. Even in the case of Laurelhurst and Beverly Cleary, directing donors to contribute directly to the PPS Parent Fund or COVID Relief Fund. But real policy, real change will not occur unless you, as directors of the school board, take responsibility for this policy. In his testimony drafted for the members of the Boston School Committee, Ebron Kendy succinctly explained why it's important to eliminate racist policies in our public school systems. Kendy wrote, "I am not going to speak to you about what is best for my child. It is not your job to do what's best for my child. It is your job to do what's best for all Boston children. And I am one of many Boston residents who share your perspective, thinking about what's best for the community of Latinx and white and black and Asian and native and biracial and low income and middle income and upper income kids in this city. And what is always best for the community is admission policies that create equal opportunity for all. That's how we should be assessing proposed and existing policies. Are they reducing or maintaining racial inequities? Because if they are reducing racial inequity, then they are anti-racist. If they are maintaining or expanding racial inequity, then they are racist. I'm here once again to ask you to commit to bringing this policy to this committee and then move it forward to the whole board as the continued reliance on private fundraising to meet core educational needs such as hiring staff within individual school communities is a barrier to coming together to address the gaps in robust and stable funding for all PPS students as one district. This is one simple step that you can take to have a lasting impact on a more equitable, unified districts going forward, encouraging school communities to join forces and determine our potential to be better together. Thank you."
Thank you. That's all that we have signed up for. Public comment.
Okay. I think we are, unless there's something else for the good of the order. Okay, we are done for today. And thank, thank you to everybody for active participation, and we will see you in three weeks. Okay, thanks.
Forty-three minutes early.